Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2014. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Please call the roll.
Leo.
Here.
Elias.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Berzog.
Here.
Weber-Gurk.
Here.
Saginac.
We have a call.
All right. We'll call Pledge of Allegiance this evening. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by two students from Oshkosh North High School, Isabel Abner Holden and Lydia Gothier. Please rise and follow them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you both for coming this evening. This is the pledge. And we have these tickets, please. Appreciation. And as I say to everyone else, actually, here you are. You are free to stay and watch the evening, but it can be lengthy. And you are also free to leave if that's easy to you and you have school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second, Board Administrative Reports. Superintendent?
Yes, President, we didn't leave off this evening. Rather than begin the superintendent's report, and we have Board Director Eliasen, who is going to, is leading the effort that starts tomorrow morning, actually, with kicking off of sailing for our spring enrichment program for the school district. And I'm going to turn the program over to Steve Eliasen, who will introduce all the guests and supporters and volunteers who are part of this effort that is exciting. And from the sound of it, the temperature should be the right one tomorrow. And it doesn't appear that the rain shall continue at the present time. So it'll be good. So with that, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mack. I would like to introduce, if I could, please have a seat if you would, Mr. Jason Bemis, Sails Shewagun President, Dr. Ian Howes, Dr. Eric Smiltnake and Kathleen Markowski. You're welcome to have a seat at the table, and I will spare you the interrogation, so you're in good stead. But we would like to, as a district, as a board, as a community of employees and supporters and parents and families and everybody, thank you for your sustained, generous, full-shouldered support for the program years on now. And just to go around briefly, Dr. Eric's been involved both in winter and summer programming. And when I mentioned other sailing centers around the country, that we actually have an M.D. on the water with us for safety on select days, they're simply blown away. So Dr. Eric's giving days to the program this summer after doing so all winter long. So thank you, Dr. Eric.
No problem. Thank you for inviting me to be involved with this. I think I had really a great time working with everybody, with all of the students in the winter program. And we got to see a little bit of what was going on with the sailing program in the summer, so I'm just very pleased to continue to be involved.
Well, thank you. Mr. Jason Bemis is Sails Shewagun President and with Bemis Manufacturing Company in Shewagun Falls. He's been a strong supporter of the program all the way through. And our students in the district will have four new Hobie Cats to sail, starting tomorrow, thanks to the generosity of Mr. Bemis. So thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The hardware is the least I can do. It's your passion that I'm really, really in love with, so.
Oh, well, thank you. It's a great big effort, right, from all around the city. Dr. Ian Howes has been with us almost since inception and has been especially importantly the STEM leader in the work we've been doing with STEM through sailing. Has been tireless on the water, incessant phone calls and emails and classroom appearances and travel and boat rigging and the whole of it. And maybe the coolest part is when kids say, "Are you really from England? Because you talk cool." That's sort of my favorite part. So thank you, Dr. Howes, for all your efforts over all these years with the program.
If the kids don't know how to sail at the end, it's because they never understood a word I said.
And a personality much more pleasant than the infamous Dr. Howes of television.
And also with us tonight is Kathleen Markowski, also with the Theta-Care practice here in Oshkosh. She's been a supporter, again, of both winter programming and our summer programming, including, you know, school and Boys and Girls Club sailing in the summer. And so the Theta organization's been fantastic on all these initiatives, and thank you for your support, Kathleen, as well.
Thank you, too. And I mimic what Eric said, and I think the biggest thing is getting the kids active, getting them out there, getting them moving, getting them to find a sport that they enjoy, and just intermingling with them and seeing how happy they are. It's just been a wonderful experience for us.
And you're a wicked good ice skater, too, if I might add.
Oh, yes, we saw that. That was presented.
I tried.
We have, of course, a long list, and it's a little tricky to talk about all the other people who have helped, and where do you start and where do you end, right? We have scads of parents every day at the water. We have teachers who have taken great leaps, and principals and administrators and so many people in the community who kind of put it on the line and said, "Let's do this thing," incrementally over the seven years. But now, beginning of fall of '14, every fifth grader in the district learns to sail. And again, when you talk to people in Annapolis or San Diego, they go, "What?" In fact, we have a couple of guests with us from the senior club, kind of observing the program tomorrow, seeking to replicate that in other communities. So to me, it's a beautiful moment. It's a beautiful distillation of these years that we're at the point. And you folks are representative, and you've been heavy lifters. We have scads of others who have, you know, been other heavy lifters along the way. So I just really wanted to put the camera and the light on you, the microphones on you, and say thank you as publicly and profoundly as I can. So thank you.
And from the board, I think I would like to express our thanks that you, Mr. Eliasen, and that the rest of you have brought this forward and made it such a success here in the district. The idea that we have a sailing program, the idea that every fifth grader's going to be out there learning how to sail, sets us apart. It's a challenge that you took on over seven years ago and have continued with. You didn't, you know, back down or give up, as, you know, things might have gotten a little rocky here and there. And thank you very much, all of you, for your support. Yep. Thank you.
Sorry, I was expecting our lowest store manager, Vinnie Madalena, to be here tonight. He must have been tied up with some contact for sales. But have been fantastic supporters of the program and all this STEM stuff. So thanks.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you've got to put a seal. And we understand the same rules that apply to our leaders of the Pledge of Allegiance apply to Eric, I guess. We always want to be respectful.
You're not required to stay for a person.
Superintendent's Report. As you can well imagine, at this time of the year, the celebrations of accomplishment and achievement are massive. And we will begin with the recognition of a whole, long list of individuals and activities that have been going on in our schools in the past three-week period for today. The Oshkosh North High School Student Volunteers in Ecuador. Lisa Hardel, senior at Oshkosh North High School, spent two weeks volunteering while at a wildlife preserve in Ecuador. While there, she and her new friends from all over the world help care for abused and rescued animals. Alyssa commented that her favorite animal was a cari undae, native of South America. She also worked with oslets and several species of birds. When asked what she learned from the experience, Alyssa mentioned a newfound love of travel, helping animals, using her Spanish skills acquired during her five years of Spanish classes, and how to be independent and self-reliant in a different country. She plans to share her experiences and her passion for travel with her Spanish class soon. South Park Students Raise Funds to Benefit Veterans. Mr. Amphinson's homeroom at South Park Middle School wanted to do something to help others and involve the whole school. Money was raised by collecting $1 for participating in Hat Day and Pyjama Day. Students also sold calendars, pins, and home basketball games. Staff were involved in paying to participate in casual days and were able to pay to take part in part of the baked potato bar. The students had a goal of $500, which is the cost of one veteran for the Old Glory Honor Flight trip. South Park was able to raise $1,005 for the Old Glory trip from northeastern Wisconsin. Now, not one, but two veterans will be able to experience that Honor Flight. Great job for South Park Middle School students. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction congratulates Merrill Middle and Merrill Elementary Schools for being awarded a K-8 Twenty-First Century Learning Center grant, starting with 2014-15 school year and running for five years. Students will participate in homework assistance, tutoring, community partnership, and technology activities. Encompass students participating in Beaming Horseback Riding Program. The Encompass Program at Merrill Elementary is a specialized program for students with special needs, specifically those related to emotional behavioral disorders and mental health. After collaborating with Rachel Braun, a student at Oshkosh West High School, as a part of her school passion project and the Oshkosh School District Special Education Program, Encompass is excited to have been chosen as a pilot program from the Oshkosh Area School District for the Beaming Horseback Riding Program, a nonprofit charitable organization based in Nina, Wisconsin, and a member of the Professional Association of Therapeutic Horsemanship, PATH International, founded in 2004. Beaming exists to enhance the quality of life for people with special needs by developing relationships between people and horses. Since the movement of the horse closely resembles that of human, horseback riding provides riders with a sensational sensation similar to walking. By involuntary training their muscles and improving their neurological functioning and balance, participants grow skills in coordination and self-assurance while receiving therapeutic muscle stimulation. The program comes at no cost to our students, and transportation is being provided by the school district. Our students' experience includes preparing their horses for riding through brushing and saddling, riding the horse with assistance of several handlers, and helping to feed, mix feed, and brushing out stalls at each lesson's end. So congratulations to all students involved, but most especially those students who helped make that possible. Oshkosh West Team Competes at Solar Olympics. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West Solar Olympic Team for competing in the Eighteenth Annual Solar Olympic Competition, held in University of Wisconsin-Green Bay on May 14. The team made a big impression with massive solar water heater Bentley Apple, and Ben Adams took home a gold medal for their solar jeopardy event. Webster Middle School recently had a fine arts night to show off students' work in our tech face, F.A.C.E., Family and Consumer Science Education Band, Chorus, and Orchestra. They had food catered by Primo's Restaurant, test drives in cars provided by Bergstrom, raffle baskets, and a book fair for families to enjoy in an effort to raise money to renovate their auditorium. Webster was able to raise $3,500 in just one night. It was a huge success. And I believe board members and others may have received a packet regarding identifying a donation, and we would encourage the community to be aware that for a sum, I believe, $200, a chair can be named in your honor to restore the Webster-Stanley Auditorium. Webster-Stanley National History Day students make a strong showing at the state. Congratulations to Sonia Carter, Tez FitzHenry, Emily Liski, Emily Scherer, Ella Dumke, Gabriel Prehn, Megan Schulte, Jaden Holstein, Marina Rasmussen, Isaac Bach, Angelica Paulbruch, for completing in Madison at the National History Competition National History Day. Special recognition goes to Sonia Carter for being named a runner-up for a research project, Unishriver, and the Special Olympics. Ella Dumke, Gabrielle Prehn, Megan Schulte for their, also being named runners-up for their performance on Amelia Earhart, and Anna Liski, Emily Scherer also received local history award for their exhibit on Jesse "Jack" Hooper. All the students worked extremely hard on their projects and represented Webster well, and we're also very proud of them. I believe they're also in the audience here tonight to be recognized, and I'm going to turn over to Julie for additional recognition, as we have contestants moving on to College Park, Maryland.
So these are our state qualifiers that did an excellent job, so if we give them a round of applause, we're super proud of them. And I believe the next slide, if we can go to that.
In my order, the next slide is not in here, so.
If we can find our national, because we actually have students that, from the state level, are now going to nationals, and we would like to recognize them, and I believe they're in the slides or somewhere.
For some reason, it's.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Nope.
That one.
There we go. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Vicki Poyer to introduce our Trager Middle School students heading to nationals.
Thank you very much for your time. For those of you who don't know, National History Day is a national organization which middle school and high school students can participate in over the course of several months. How many months would you say it took, you guys? Five, six months of researching a topic of choice in U.S., world, or local history? And students, many of our students went to the University of Wisconsin-Madison and here to our UW-Oshkosh Archives to do much of their primary source research. One of our groups, Carly Coons, Julian Rourke, and Andrea Beecher, if you guys could stand up, were state finalists. And thank you, ladies. And they actually researched a local Supreme Court case, Winnebago versus DeShaney, and their interviews were of the actual lawyers and social workers involved in that case from several years ago, 1980s, correct? So talk about a tremendous experience with primary source research. So I'd like to thank these ladies for all their efforts. And then, if I could have Jared, Amelia, and Josh stand up. These individuals created an original, they wrote, they researched, wrote, and created an original performance on music censorship as a violate, excuse me, Supreme Court rights as a violation of your First Amendment rights, music censorship. And we're looking at Elvis Presley, Ed Sullivan. And Amelia, of course, served as our reporter and tipper gore, as they looked at music censorship throughout the decades. And they took first in state, and they will be representing our school district at Nationals in Washington, D.C. So congratulations. And I would just really like to thank particularly Julie for all of your support for our program. There's a lot of busing that goes on and a lot of time that, a lot of time and resources that these kids just would not be able to do without the support of our school district. So thank you very much.
And I wanted to thank our parents that are also here tonight, because it took a lot of time and effort and giving up Saturdays and just getting kids all over the place to do all this research. And we really appreciate our families and their supports of their students as they're going on in competition. It's just been, it's been wonderful that we've been able to do this in the school district. And many of our social studies classrooms is where it starts, and then our students' passions carry them on to state and national competitions. So thank you to all of our teachers, our students, and our families.
And I trust we will get a video of that performance, so that we can present it to the greater community, because that would be a wonderful experience, both for their collection when they're 40 years old, but also for us to see and witness now, to see that outstanding performance.
We will bring that back for you. I do need to tell you, it takes a lot of work to turn these children into Elvis, excuse me, Elvis, Ed, and Tipper. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Epcot is our emergency preparedness committee that meets diligently nine months of the year, 10 months of the year. And I wish that, at this time, although their names are not listed here, this is a list of the accomplishments of the Epcot Committee, which is the Emergency Preparedness Collaboration Operation Team for the school district in cooperation with the Oshkosh Police Department, the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office, the Winnebago County Emergency Preparedness Office, the Fire Department, and also certainly the County Sheriff's Office, in monthly working together to make sure that safety and security is tops in our school district. In fact, our program, really led by Kirby Schultz and Jay Jones and Tony Byrd, who's been added as the third tri-leader of this program of dedicated principals in our district, lead the effort in coordinating all of the activities that are necessary to complete them. And you see the long list of items that they've been involved with, going over some three pages of activities for this year. And Andy Jones and I attend virtually all of the meetings, and they run the meetings, and we keep informed of the issues that we need to exercise to make it happen throughout the district. But the efforts of these three principals of Jay, Kirby, and Tony are to be congratulated for their efforts of making sure that our schools are as prepared for any emergency as we could ever have. And you should be aware that they were certainly instrumental in helping us, along with Dave Gunlock in the Technology Department, in securing all of our buildings for the coming, this past year, and having effectively as secure as we can each of our buildings during each school day. We're grateful for their efforts, but they have been a tremendous asset to add safety and security to the children of the community. Thank you so much to them. Trager Middle School, heading to National History Day. We've got that covered, and we'll move on to Oshkosh School Olympic news, Special Olympic News. Congratulations to the very talented, hard-working state qualifiers for athletics. The Summer Camp, Summer Games State Tournament will be held June 5 through the 7 at the University of Wisconsin-Stevens Point. Anthony Cantolano, Jesse Cami, Ronnie Lutz, Jr., and Jordan Mueller are all participants in that activity. And we're most especially thankful to all the coaches and volunteers who assist in making this program operate so well. The Oshkosh School Special Olympic News is included, and congratulations to Carson Elger, Aaron Croners, Jared Falk, and Natalie Falk for their participation in the 2014 Summer Game Qualifier Aquatics. And then, the Wisconsin Partnership for Childhood Fitness Initiative Grants. Congratulations to Merrill Middle School and South Park Middle School for the Wisconsin Partnership for Childhood Fitness Initiative Grants in the amount of $1,000 each. The Department of Public Instruction, in cooperation with the University of Wisconsin-Madison, was awarded the grant to, were required to implement strategies to increase physical activity, submit data to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and those two schools accomplished that. And the award recognizes the school's exemplary efforts in providing opportunities for physical activity. Oshkosh North, junior published in Teen Link, Oshkosh North, junior Tracy Shulkey will have her review of the movie Paranormal Activity, published in the June issue of Teen Link Magazine. Teen Link Magazine is sponsored by the Young Authors Foundation and reaches millions of teens nationwide. In order to publish in Teen Link, students must compete against other students, not only in the United States, but internationally. This is Trace's fourth published piece. Trace is currently taking the Chris Keen-Harchus Creative Writing Class for a second time for advanced study credit and continues her work to be submitted for publication. Last month, Trace was chosen to read in conjunction with the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh English Faculty at the Spring Reading held at the New Moon Cafe. Trace performs his spoken-word poetry and reads in the company of published professors Ronald Rindow and Laura Jean Baker. Congratulations to Oshkosh West High School Spanish Students. Oshkosh West Students did a fantastic job on the National Spanish Exam. Over 150,000 students take the exam, and we're proud to announce that 61% of the students who voluntarily took the exam received national recognition from the group of Spanish IV and Spanish V students. 25 of those students received a national merit recognition. Six students received a bronze award recognition. Five students received silver, and two students received a gold award recognition. This is a big deal in the world of Spanish language instruction, and all the Spanish teachers are most proud of them. Oshkosh West High School Teacher Chosen for Teacher for Global Classroom Program. Oshkosh West Spanish Teacher Kathy Heinon was selected for the Teacher for Global Classroom TGC Program. Over 400 teachers applied from 46 states and the District of Columbia, and Kathy is among 80 teachers who were selected for participation. The goal of the TGC Program is to provide teachers with an opportunity to explore the themes and applications for global education in the U.S. secondary school classrooms. As a part of the TGC, Kathy will participate in an online professional development course to attend Global Education Symposium in Washington, D.C., and travel on an international fellowship for two or three weeks in a country, in-country visit, and will be eligible for alumni professional development sessions and micro grants. As a part of her in-country fellowship, Kathy will have an opportunity to visit schools, classrooms, and meet with teachers and educational leaders. And lastly, is the list of activities in the last two and a half weeks. Been partying too and visiting, and it's a wonderful time of the year. There are far more invitations to attend events than fit in my calendar, and it's exciting to try to be at as many of those. And the last slide, that being sailing. I intend to be at Lakeside tomorrow to greet our first group of sailors for the year and to celebrate the outstanding experience of sailing for our young people in the school district. It's supposed to be a beautiful day. Right. That completes my report.
Thank you. Actually, do we have any action steps on the listening session?
I did not receive them, and I will report them next time.
All right. Other reports? Do any board members have reports? Steve?
Policy and Governance on May 20. Now, there's a number of agenda items.
Yeah, I can always tell when you guys have got.
Meeting this evening. We talked about, at some point in the future, in the near future, we need to come up with a concussion management plan. We had Craig Leader and Jadarski Brad talk to us about that, as well as Dr. Geigley. This will be coming back. The PNG Committee approved the co-clerical handbook changes for 2014-15. There's a number of things on the agenda this evening, one of which is 453 Student Healthcare. We recommend passage of that this evening. 453.34, we also recommend passage of that this evening. After review, 447.31, an expulsion hearing officer. This is a newer policy. We discuss it in length. There was a few minor revisions made to it, and we recommend approval this evening on that one as well. The PNG Committee approved the co-clerical handbook changes for 2014-15. There's a number of things on the agenda this evening, one of which is 453 Student Healthcare. We recommend passage of that this evening. 453.34, we also recommend passage of that this evening. After review, 447.31, an expulsion hearing officer. This is a newer policy. We discuss it in length. There was a few minor revisions made to it, and we recommend approval this evening on that one as well. 163 Board Member Complaint Resolution Process is essentially an upgraded information management system. When we get problems or concerns from our constituency, parents, that kind of stuff, and it's directed to the board members. In the future, what we'll be able to do is, to do this electronically, we'll be able to submit the information to administration and actually be able to view what the resolution is to the situation or the complaint, which is good. It's a good step forward, I think. That's up for vote this evening. We recommend approval on that. Student Representatives to the Board of Education, that has to do with our high school students sitting on the board, and it's a new policy, and we recommend approval for that as well. This evening, 731.3, personal furniture and appliances. We just struck a line in there to get it up to. It said essentially, the last time I was modifying, 2006, that teachers couldn't have computers in their classrooms. We found that to be somewhat draconian, so we struck that, and we recommend approval of that as well. That is our policy and governance.
Thank you, Mr. Deo. Are there any other reports? All right. Seeing none, we go on to non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on a non-agenda-related item?
Yes.
If so, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your conversation to five minutes.
We only have five minutes. My name is Marnie Burton. My address is 646 DePere Street in Manassia, Wisconsin, 54952. Do you know your address? Dad? This is... You want to say your name? I'm McKenna Friend.
McKenna's address is 299 Northwest David Drive, Oshkosh, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
I am a first-grade teacher at Franklin Elementary School, and this is one of our students, McKenna. And how this started was when the referendum was in process of being voted upon. McKenna, and actually, a student teacher from the University of Wisconsin, and I thought about this project that we could do on the iPad for a reading assignment. And I turned over the student teacher to lead the small group of children, and I watched, and I was watching how McKenna pretty much did it all by herself. And I thought to myself, wow. You know what? If this referendum doesn't pass, I know we have great teachers in Oshkosh. I know that is a fact. I've taught here for 13 years, and I know that's a fact. But we won't, if it does not pass, we won't have the support of the community in resources and in spirit to do the things that we really want to do for kids. So, I actually had called Stan, and I talked to my principal, I said, "I would love to talk to the board," you know, and he said, "Well, we probably should wait till it passes." And I said, "Yeah, you're probably right, and I just want to thank you all, everyone actually in this room, and McKenna, and everyone who was here and is gone now, for all your support, your unanimous support of teaching and of community." And McKenna allowed me to show what she did all by herself on the iPad, so thank you. I would like to share it, show it, hopefully it works. But before I show it, because I'll probably just end with this, I just truly want to just thank you for allowing me to feel supported and feel confident that I'll be able to provide this experience for McKenna and hopefully many students in the years to come. So, Dave, where are you? We're going to try it. Here we go. Going to AirPlay. Going on the boardroom. All right. Should come up. So, there we are on the, isn't this cool? Someone turn this up. I mean, it is really actually incredible, if you think about it. Okay, ready? You going to find it? I'll find it for you. So, and before we start, I just want you to know that this is unedited. So, I didn't, I wanted to show exactly what she did, and this is what she did. Are you going to press play?
A cub's first year. A tiny bear is born. The cub cannot see or hear. The cub, it sleeps next to its mother in the den. These cubs are asleep. Now the cub is awake. The cub has its eyes closed. Now the cub is eating berries. The cub is learning how to do it. The cub is learning how to eat good things. The end.
So, obviously, it's a... Oh, yes. So, obviously, that was a synthesis of her learning in a nonfiction book, and just a small example of one week of learning and what technology and teaching can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And not a part of the referendum was Soundproof Studios for this too.
Right, oh yeah, but yeah, that was my class, in the background. They say thank you, too.
Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, actually, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on a non-agenda-related public forum item? Public item? No? Agenda-related public forum? Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an agenda-related item? Something that's on tonight's agenda? No? All right. Seeing none, we will go on to Consent Resolution Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or as discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the Consent Agenda and will be voted on separately. I have 19 and 20. Yes?
7B and 13.
7B and 13.
And 23.
And 23.
I had sent you an email on that earlier today.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
Any others? All right. Please call the roll. Oh, I have...
Resolution.
The board will consider approval of, sorry, minutes of special board meeting, board reorganization on April 28, 2014, minutes of regular board meeting on April 30, 2014, minutes of special board meeting on May 12, 2014, minutes of regular board meeting on May 14, 2014, minutes of regular board meeting, executive session on May 14, 2014, bills payable. Personnel, appointments, registrations, excuse me, personnel A, appointments, registrations, retirements, and salary schedule. Number eight, four-year-old kindergarten contracts. Number nine, extended year staffing for current school year counselors. Number 10, extended contract hours for agriculture staff. Number 11, extended contract hours for literacy staff. Number 12, instructional material fee schedule. Number 14, actually, I had, it's too late, isn't it, for me to pull number 12? Okay. Approval of funding needs for OASD innovation for 2014-2015. Certification of high school graduates, number 15. Number 16, updates to Policy 453, Student Healthcare Services. Number 17, deletion of Policy 453.34, Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome HIV Virus. Number 18, new policy, 447.31, expulsion hearing officer. Number 21, updates to Policy 731.3, Personal Furniture and Appliances Utilized in Schools. Number 22, updated high school course additions for 2014-15 school year.
Still move.
Second.
May I just remind the board, before you vote, they're included in the high school listing late this afternoon, you did receive a revised list of one addition and three withdrawals, I believe, of graduates, so that the action you're taking is on the most recent list.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Deo?
Aye.
Deo, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Lambberger?
Aye.
Lambberger, aye. Saginaw? Motionary.
All right. Next, we have individually considered resolutions. Number 7B, Personnel Administrator Appointment.
I had asked that this be pulled for a couple of reasons. Beginning in 2012, it's been documented in the Northwestern that there have been two trends that have emerged that I have concerns with, and this appointment would be addressing one of those two. One of those trends was that, beginning in 2010, there were a couple of administrators in the district or administrator recommendations who had not followed the, well, let me start over. The district's hiring process for administrators had not been followed for a couple of recommendations for administrative appointments. It was well documented in the Oshkosh Northwestern on at least two occasions. The second trend was to appoint individuals or recommend for appointment individuals for administrative positions who did not possess the license and therefore had not completed the coursework, leading to an endorsement from an institution of higher learning for that particular license to serve as an administrator in Wisconsin. Since 2010, there have been 12, excuse me, 11 requests to the board for emergency licenses for administrators, and 7B would represent the 12th. I find this concerning from a number of standpoints. First of all, we've heard quite a bit about being concerned with retaining our administrators. I'm concerned about that as well. I don't think that it's motivating for people in the district with the licenses for the work that they're asked to do, to see people come in who don't have those licenses and be paid at the same level as someone who would have that license. I also think it's concerning to me that it potentially sends a message to future candidates to apply for administrative jobs in this district when we hire people or recommend for hire people who do not possess the license, meaning they don't have the credits in administration. Now, it is possible for these people to get emergency license. I know that, and I respect that. I also know that for many years, there has been a shortage of people who choose to go into administration. But I just don't think it's good practice to be looking at a 12th emergency license in four years. I think that's very concerning. So, I will be voting no on this resolution, not because of the individual who is being recommended. I don't know this individual. I don't have a personal or professional relationship of any kind with her or the knowledge of her work, other than her presenting to the board on more than one occasion, or being part of a presentation team on the 4K program. And I do respect the accolades that she has received for that. But I believe in hiring people who have the experience and the credits, the licenses, to be hired for the jobs we're asking them to do, so I will be voting no on this resolution.
Any other comments?
I guess I have a comment. I want to know how the board feels about this policy. Because if we're not going to abide by the policy, then let's change the policy. You know, I'd like to solve the problem. We have two problems, as I see it.
I believe we are not violating the policy. We are within the policy's means, because this individual would have a one-year license issued through the Department of Public Instruction, so this person would be licensed as administrator for one year, and then this person would obtain the 51 license the spring of 15. So, all the while, this person...
And if they did not, they could not continue.
I'm sorry?
If they did not, they could not continue.
If any administrator or professional in our district does not have the license, they cannot work as a licensed professional. So, for example, if we had an administrator whose license expired, and they could not get that license within a timely manner, that person could not continue practicing as an administrator. In my career, there have been a couple of teachers who have let their license expire after the five years and after the one-year extension, and the DPI will not issue that person another license under the circumstances, and that person then was basically voluntarily terminating his or her employment with the employer. But in this case, we are not violating the policy. The person would have a one-year license.
Okay. It may not be a violation of policy, but I don't think it's good practice to continue to ask for emergency licenses.
Understood.
In 12, in four years, I think, is a lot. And maybe the pool has changed. I don't know that. But I do think a request for a 12th emergency license in four years is concerning.
Having discussed this previously with the board, I believe that we did do diligence in reviewing candidates for the position. In fact, I stepped in and did not permit the application of a non-license in the first round of selection because of wanting to be sure that we exhausted any avenue for license and the uniqueness of this early childhood, four-year-old position. It became very clear that standard-prepared principals, who are generally K-5 or elementary-prepared or K-12-prepared, do not have the breadth and depth of knowledge that communicates clearly to those who would serve a four-year-old program. And in the second, we discovered that very clearly in the first round of interviews. And in the second round of interviews, when the candidate in question was considered for that, it became very clear that the most well-prepared individual, in spite of not qualifying originally for a permanent license, is the recommended candidate. And thus, we made the judgment to recommend this candidate because of the best fit for the job and the ability to obtain a one-year provisional license.
Other comments? Seeing none? Oh, all right. Be resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Appointment Elizabeth Shendell, Principal, 4K Ready for Learning, effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Still move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Deo?
Aye.
Deo, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
No.
Hursak, no. Lambberger?
Aye.
Lambberger, aye. Saginaw? Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Motionary.
Resolution number 13, be resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the Fox Valley Technical College Riverside Program Contract as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
Still move.
Second.
I also asked for this one to be pulled. I had an opportunity earlier today to speak with Dr. Geigley and commend him on the quality of his report. I know many of us at this table had an opportunity, and in this room, central office administrators were well represented at the Riverside graduation not that long ago. And I continue to be impressed by our staff who contribute to that program, along with those of Fox Valley Tech. It's very evident that these instructors form strong relationships and rapport with these students, which must be part of their success in completing the program. There were two things in the staff report that concerned me. One was the waiting list. When I read that it often is a four-to-six-month waiting list, if you're a 16, or 17, or 18-year-old, four to six months out of your life is a long time to wait. And we can't afford to lose any of these students. When I read also that a number of these students have a seventh-grade reading level, that's very concerning to me in terms of what is the future of this young person, and what's the impact on his or her family and our community if we don't have students who are well-prepared, as Julie Mosher so eloquently always says, who are college-ready, community-ready, and career-ready. I think I had that somewhere. I am terrible. So...
Just a little different order, but that's good.
Okay. Sorry, I'll get it right next time. So, I'm hoping that in the future, when we consider the overall budget for the 14-15 school year, we can address one of the concerns in Dr. Geigley's report, that we have a waiting list. I would hope that we would eventually have resources so that we can address a waiting list, so that these students don't have to wait that long. You know, we live in an age where we want things in an instant. We get impatient standing in front of the microwave. We get impatient when our computer doesn't boot up within a matter of seconds. So, to wait four to six months to get into a program that you or your family believe will meet your needs, I think is something that we also need to address in the future. But again, I want to commend Dr. Geigley and the district staff and the Riverside staff who contribute to the success of these students, leading to high school completion. So, thank you.
And actually, I wanted to ask if you could maybe speak a little bit to part of the overall content, purpose of presentation paragraph, which says Riverside Program, says the information can also guide a decision regarding the expansion of the Riverside program.
the information can also guide a decision regarding expansion of the Riverside program by adding additional sections, which could serve 14 more students.
Well, I, I prepared it in the way I did, after the workshop, which was at the April meeting. And I prepared it with the sense that, I guess I had that night, that the board was saying that we should not have such a long waiting list, and we should try to serve these students sooner than later. And so, the information you have in front of you, and the attached contract, the, is actually for the same number of sections, three, and the total contract amount that is in the report. The added compet, the added amount, per, for 14 students, is actually $67,544,40. And that money is not, that would be new money, and that's why in the chart, I showed it as over and above the amount of the contract. And in addition to the basic cost, which is statutorily governed by the legislature, and they change it frequently for each new biennium, although it hasn't changed much in the last several years, it's been pretty constant within a few cents. The added charge is for testing fees and the one-time per-student fee of $265, and that's for every new student. So, if six students out of a section graduate during the year and are replaced, we have to have some allowance for that additional, then six students, as they enter in December, or March, or February, whenever it might be. Because students can finish at any point during the year. So, when I said this could guide your decision, which, and the technical college staff administrators I've spoken to and are more than willing to reissue the contract for an additional, you know, amount to show 14 more students. And I think, if, I will say, if you were to go that direction, sooner than later is better, because they also will be staffing all their programs in adult basic education, which, of which this is one. And so, in order for them to have proper prep time in hiring their staff, I think, as I said, sooner is better than later, if the, if that's the desire of the board to add an additional section to address the issue that Dr. Herzog was outlining.
And I would just add the comment, I did talk to Dr. Herzog ahead of the meeting on the issue, that you don't, you won't find a stronger supporter of our enhancing that program than myself. I, I think it's, it's just an all-star program of saving students. But in our discussions with our executive director of business services, she asked a very wise question, is that it would really be more proper for us to come back to the board with all the other potential needs of adjustment at the same time. So, you make a decision in light of what room we have that we can afford to move ahead with. Yes, we generate additional revenue, but it's a little harder to predict this additional revenue, because we don't know the loss rate. If we keep students in our high schools, we never lose them, it's not a net gain. But the reality is that a certain percentage of those students, we will definitely lose if there's a waiting list, and we, we know and understand that. And we would like to come back to you, to June or July, more than likely July, with a formal recommendation. And we will work with our friends at Fox Valley to make sure that we can make that. But we make it in the light of day of all the pieces. Because I think, in fairness to you, to piecemeal any budget additions is unfair to you as a board with having a full perspective. And if you could give us that indulgence to do that-
Sure.
-I think it's a wiser way to move ahead.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw? Wiedenha?
Aye.
Wiedenha, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Resolution number 19, be resolved, the Oshkosh area school district board of education approved the revisions to policy 163, board member complaint resolution process as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Allison?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. So, I guess my main question is, is the intent that we fill out a complaint form for every call that we get?
I, I don't expect so. I would think, I think if we have a track record to deal with it, the present process, where you as board members contact me regarding the issue, is very efficient. We would initiate making sure that we have a paper record to do so, and we can handle it in that way. Our intent by having this is, it's really a takeoff from a policy that's been somewhat ignored over the years-
Totally ignored, yeah.
-and trying to deal with it most efficiently. But I can either receive them by telephone, or by, in writing, or even an email that I can then put into the system, so that we have a way of tracking it and keeping you informed.
Okay.
I guess I, too, was concerned about this, only in that we were just talking about, you know, a policy, and, you know, if we're not going to utilize that policy, why do we have it? And I sort of think of this one as being the same way. The chances of me filling out a form in order to talk to you-
Right.
-in order to send something to you is probably pretty minute.
Sure.
And I guess I wouldn't want to be violating policy, just because I called you and talked to you, as opposed to doing this. So, I guess I wasn't in favor of this.
Our goal is to really have a legitimate process of providing you with feedback on status of progress on the issue. On the other hand, we can handle receiving issues. I can tell you that a far larger number of parent complaints come to, come to, to my office, or to, directly to Andy, which I refer, which we start the process, where Andy intercedes, Dr. Jones intercedes with, working with the parent and beginning, and the, and the principals involved, to kind of construct the entire story of what has occurred. And we receive those in whichever format you have. But our goal was to create a standardized system to communicate and have available to you the status of any complaints you might have received. And then, the other piece that is important to us is that, you know, the fundamental adage of, if you communicate one thing to one board member, you make sure all board members know. This would create a standard form to keep the status up to date on, because board members, very properly, don't contact other board members about a complaint they've received. They contact the superintendent. By then, are we stating the complaint, putting it on the form? You know that the status, so that in case you hear it, or hear the complaint again, you have knowledge of the fact that it's already been reported, it's been investigated, and this is the status of the report.
Okay.
Steve?
What I like about this is, we have work orders, when computers get broken, we have work orders for maintenance in any building that we have, if something is not working right. And what this does actually is modernize this old policy. It's not saying we have to fill this out. I mean, you can use electronic email, you could sit there and phone call, whatever. The real caveat in here, instead of like, all right, if you get a concern, or a complaint or something from someone, and you do forward it on, what happens to it? Under the old system, we had no idea what happened to it. Under this system, we have an opportunity, using Google Docs, I believe-
Correct.
-and an Excel sheet, to sit there and actually check on the status of the complaints or the concerns of the constituency that we forward on to administration. Correct, Dr. Jones?
Correct. You're absolutely correct. If I just may add and go one step further, what you, you are correct, this is a Google document, and so it is a Google form. The form ends up in a Google spreadsheet, very similar to an Excel spreadsheet. What you're not seeing, because of the way the form is set up, is to handle the complaint. What you're not going to see is there'll be two additional columns. You would see every question here as a column, and there'll be two additional ones that Stan would have access to, and you would also be able to see, which is who Stan has assigned this problem to. So, he might, the problem might come in, complaint at school X, he might assign it to me. So, he'd entered me, he would let me know that. And then, the other column would be is what action is being taken and a resolution to the problem. And, and that's not on the form. So, you would have access to those additional columns. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to put it on, on the form the way it is. So, there are two columns that you would, would have access to.
I guess the way the resolution is currently stated, though, if I do what I usually do, which is when I get a complaint like that, I forward it to Stan, I would be violating this, because it says that I shall fill out this complaint form, which I'm unlikely to do. I guess currently, I'm unwilling to vote for it the way it is, because it is prescribing a method that I, I don't think probably the board will stick to. And as we were just talking about it, I don't want to-
Sure.
...create policy that, that we don't follow anyway.
We could take it back to policy and governance, and we'll get into some-
Does it have to go there?
Flexibility, or, or we could enter a "may," and, or through other means.
Well, that's what I was wondering. If we, if we strike a word and put in a word, I don't know that you have to spend more time on it for me.
No, I, that's fine, too.
I would, I can't obviously make a motion in that regard.
I will.
Pardon?
Okay. I'd like to move that, that we amend the resolution as, as it is written now, replace the word "shall" with "may." I'm not sure where it is in there.
But in any, any case, we would want to retain the issue of, that you communicate with the superintendent in order to get it done.
Right.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Barb?
The, the old form, or what's referred to as the old form, was labeled customer feedback form. And I was a central office administrator at the time that took effect, and we had a staff person who was assigned to receive those at central office. And then, we're kind of as a conflict mediator, as it were, to bring the two parties together. That is, appropriate district staff person. And the, usually it was the parent, or sometimes the parent and the student, and then, then come up with a resolution. But one of the things that, that I'm wrestling with a little bit, a little bit with this is, and it's, it's probably a matter of semantics, the terms feedback, complaint, and then I also think of the term opinion. If someone states an opinion, we wouldn't necessarily use this, but when does an opinion become a complaint? That's rhetorical. I don't have an answer.
No, I have an answer for it.
Oh, okay. And this, being that this is in the 100 series, tells us that it's, it's board policy.
Correct.
It refers to the board. But if I'm, if my neighbor across the street has a concern, they don't have to contact me to contact the superintendent. They could, is there a way for, for people in the public to access this, what's now called a customer complaint form? I'm not sure that complaint is the right word, but I'll go with it, if the rest of you want to do it that way. But if someone wants to express an opinion, or provide feedback, or a complaint, would they have access to this form without coming through a board member?
No, they would not. Hence, that's why the two different names.
Okay.
We do have a, currently do have an electronic customer feedback form-
Okay.
-that does get sent to me, as Stan had alluded to. Generally, that comes in through the phone, when somebody calls central office.
Okay.
The receptionist fills that form, and it's sent directly to me. And, and probably 99% of the time, I'm able to, to handle that. When appropriate, I inform Stan of something that might be, that he may make it, or the board maybe want to know about. I handle those things. But because this is labeled specifically a board, and the policy is directed towards the board, and it would have board access for, for board only, it would also be subject, obviously, to open records requests, as, as, as all things are in the district.
Thank you for those clarifications.
Sure. And let me assure you that based on our experience, and, and this is now speaking for 23 months of experience, I can tell you that there are probably 10 times the number of complaints we receive directly from our, our customers than ever get first reported to the board. A good number of those are direct, they, and in fact, in many cases, when they occur, and, and the principal might have exhausted every avenue of trying to resolve it, either Andy or I get calls from the principal alerting us to the expectation that we'll hear from parent X or parent Y about an issue, so that we're fully aware of the situation. But actually, I, I would say that far less than 10% of the complaints come through the board channel. Most people do work through the process of really trying to exhaust it at, not always at the teacher level, but certainly at the principal level. And our principals probably handle untold numbers of, of issues that we never hear about, because they're resolved at that level. And then, 90% more complaints come to us directly, that never come directly to a board member, and that's very appropriate. They're handling it. Because of you being elected officials in the community, it is natural for individuals to, to call. Rather, rather jokingly, I, I heard the experience of, of what both, and I don't know the statistics here, the large number of complaints about school issues that U.S. senators, congressmen, and governors get on issues. People really jump well beyond us to try to resolve issues, and, and occasionally we'll hear back from individuals that. One of the, one of the positions that, of dispute, we, what we don't have in the district, which would be wonderful to have, but it's certainly not anything we're going to afford in the future, many large districts have an ombudsman position that becomes a, a, an individual who helps try to find results and, and resolution to issues. And right now, we certainly don't have that, but it really becomes our principals, and Andys, and other support staff's role, to really effectively become ombudsmen, to help steer parents through conflicts. Because most of those conflicts don't exist necessarily with the authority figure. The vast majority of complaints, we get our issues with, with peers, student-to-student relationship issues that originate there. And then, they're maybe concerned about how they're being handled or resolved. And so, our principals and our teachers, every day, have to become ombudsmen in their own way to try to resolve disputes at, at the lowest possible level.
Thank you.
Where are we at right now with this? As far as, has it been changed, altered at all as far as we're-
We'd have to vote.
Yes, we were speaking on the motion to modify.
Right.
And that has not, we have not voted on that motion yet.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion about modifying? Or do you want to read the motion as it is now?
The amendment?
The amendment, yes.
It's just changing the word "shall" to "may," so the board member may refer the complaint to the superintendent's resolution.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All right. Vote, we, we'll vote on the amendment.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Wiedenha?
Aye.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number 20, be resolved, the Oshkosh area school district board of education approved the new policy 442.1, student representatives to the board of education, as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved.
Second.
I ask this to be pulled for just one specific reason. Within this policy, one of the last lines, "The board of education will recognize the student representatives each year with a personal, with a personal plaque that acknowledges their service to the board." I would like to make that retroactive to our, to our inaugural individuals. I think that would be appropriate. I want David to receive some sort of plaque or something.
So, you didn't like my Roberts Rules idea?
It didn't make it into the policy.
I thought they received a certificate.
They did.
Okay.
But not a plaque.
That actually was framed, but it was not.
Okay. Just so that there's some recognition there. That's cool. That's, that's the only thing I wanted to point out here.
The only clarification, we would potentially make sure we went to-
Okay, just so that there's some recognition there. That's cool. That's, that's the only thing I wanted to point out in here.
The only clarification we would potentially make sure we want to have is if we have, in this case, where we have a senior, it's clear they will end their service. If we have a returnee, such as our West Student Representative, would we recognize at the end of each year or the end of the service?
End of the service.
End of the service. Yeah. Sure. Barb?
I just have one question in that same paragraph. It notes that "names shall be engraved on a memorial plaque." Memorial plaques often imply that the people are no longer living. I don't think that's what the intent is here. Is it? Is it an honor plaque or is it a memorial plaque?
Recognition plaque rather than?
Or a recognition plaque?
Not memorial.
I don't know, maybe I'm coming off of Memorial Day weekend and I'm memorial in a different way there.
Do I, do I hear a motion to change the word memorial to honor?
Yes, you do.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
On the amendment?
On the amendment to change memorial to honor.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Wedenhopp?
Aye.
Wedenhopp, aye. Edo?
Aye.
Edo, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Amendment carry.
Your original resolution? Any more commentary?
No, I, this went through policy and governance as well as 163. We'll have to dig in, I think, a little bit deeper at policy and governance, try to make sure that when we do bring these things forward that they are in the correct manner before they're brought to the board. Because that is the correct placement to actually dissect this stuff. If board members have concerns about things that, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with doing it here, but it just is more efficient to do it actually in policy.
And these were small.
Yes, of course they are, but...
All right, please call the roll.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Wedenhopp?
Aye.
Wedenhopp, aye. Edo?
Aye.
Edo, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Motion three.
Resolution number 23, be it resolved, the Ashkash Area School District Board of Education approve the extension of the Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Laboratory School charter until June 30th, 2015, and the contract addendum as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Barb?
I had asked that this be pulled because I wanted to recognize these two individuals for serving as internal and external advocates of this continuation of this charter project. As you may know, Trina Anderson is the principal of Jacob Shapiro and has stepped up to serve in the role of internal advocate for the school. And Julie, as a central office administrator, has extended herself to serve as an external advocate of this program and to help locate resources. And I think that the efforts of these educators should be duly noted, and so I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts over the last few months. The governing board has been meeting and looking to continue this charter and serving well the students of Jacob Shapiro through their conscious discipline programs, their instrumental enrichment, and moving on into STEM. So thank you both for everything you've done to promote learning and growth of the Jacob Shapiro students.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I would like to also thank Barb Herzog. Dr. Herzog agreed last year upon her appointment that she would stay on, and I asked her to stay on through June 30th on the Charter School Board in order to escort us to this stage so that we were prepared to move on with a, a new, a new direction with this. And we're most appreciative for all the partnership that has been demonstrated. And we also, we also thank Allison for her engagement with that process as a parent and board member in, in moving this process forward. So we look forward to having the program launched with a new vision and new direction immediately, but with officialdom on July 1st.
Thank you very much.
We celebrate it all.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Please call the roll. Aye.
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 Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
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 Resolution 24, whereas the night of April 14th, 2014, 276 female students, most of them between 15 and 18 years old, were abducted by Boko Haram from the Government Girls Secondary School, a boarding school located in the northeastern province of Borno in the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And whereas all public secondary schools in Borno State were closed in March of 2014 because of increasing attacks on the past year, excuse me, in the past year that have killed hundreds of students, but the young women at the government school, secondary school were recalled to take their final exams. And whereas there are reports that the abducted girls have been sold as brides to Islamist militants for the equivalent of $12 each. And whereas the group popularly known as Boko Haram, which loosely translates from the Hasa language to Western education is sin, is known to oppose the education of girls. And whereas Boko Haram has kidnapped girls in the past to use as cooks and sex slaves and has claimed responsibility for the kidnapping of Borno State, excuse me, kidnapping in Borno State on April 14th, 2014. And whereas late May 5th, 2014, suspected Boko Haram gunmen kidnapped an additional eight girls ranging in age from 12 to 15 from a village in northeast Nigeria. And whereas reports estimate that more than 500 students and 100 teachers have been killed by Boko Haram and have destroyed roughly 500 schools in northern Nigeria. And whereas enrollment, retention, and completion of education for girls in Nigeria remains a major challenge. And whereas according to the United States, or excuse me, United Nations Children's Emergency Fund, UNICEF, some 4,700,000 children of primary school age are still not in school in Nigeria with attendance rates at the lowest in the north. And whereas studies have found that schoolchildren in Nigeria, particularly those in northern provinces, are at a disadvantage in their education, with 37% of primary-age girls in the rural northeast not attending school, and 30% of boys not attending school. And whereas, women and girls must be allowed to go to school without fear of violence and unjust treatment so that they can take their rightful place as equal citizens of the contributors to society, now therefore be it resolved. That the Ashkash Area School District Board of Education, one, expresses its strong support for the people of Nigeria, especially the parents and families of the girls abducted by Boko Haram in Borno State, and calls for the immediate safe return of those girls. Two, encourage, yes, encourages the government of Nigeria to strengthen efforts to protest, to protect girl, children seeking to obtain an education and to hold those who conduct such violent attacks accountable. Three, recognizes that every individual, regardless of gender, should have the opportunity to pursue an education without fear of discrimination. And four, encourages the Department of State and the United States Agency for International Development to continue their support for initiatives, excuse me, for initiatives that promote human rights of women and girls in Nigeria, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
I only have one item and, or one thing to say about this, and I, you know, certainly don't want to see anything happen to these girls. I would love to see them all returned. And I think this is admirable, but I have a, my own opinion about bringing forth resolutions that are not action items and which don't directly relate. I mean, yes, it certainly is about schooling, and you've pointed that out, but they don't really relate to the job that we're doing here. And for those reasons, I, only for those reasons, I will be voting no.
And to echo that, I also feel like if we're going to start talking about what happened in Nigeria, then we'd better be conclusive of our, make sure that we talk about all of the wrongs that are happening in the world, which is far too many to talk about in our school board meeting and far too many to put on our school board agenda. So I too will not be voting for this just because we can't just cover Nigeria and not cover all the other atrocities that are happening to children in education worldwide.
I brought this up because as we push forward with moving into our global awareness and our creation of global academies and introducing our new technologies essentially that are going to have our kids be able to talk to other kids in classrooms around the world, that it is more incumbent on us as leaders of this community to express opinions about things that are going on within our global community. And so that's why I brought this forward. Of course, there are things going on in Ukraine, there are things going on Somalia right now, there are a million things going on. But if you look at any other governmental entity, from the city council up to the federal government, currently, this past legislative session, I believe there was over 300 resolutions that were put out through our state government. Everything from that indeed Macedonia is a part of Greece, or it was at one point, to things that have much more, less celebratory wording in it. There has been condemnation from a number of different organizations about things, governmental entities put these out every year. And while they are non-binding resolutions, I think that it is, in my opinion, that it is incumbent on leaders to bring things like this forward instead of wondering who, how Justin Bieber is doing up in jail in Canada right now, or who is getting married to who. I think these things are much more important. And I think that unless that they're kept in the spotlight, unless that they're pushed at the local level, that they will just get thrown, thrown aside. And whether we pass this or not, this is how I feel. This is why I brought this up.
Point well taken. Anyone else? John?
I'm listening to you and Allison, and I guess my only comment is sometimes you just do things because it's the right thing to do and don't worry about the details.
Steve?
No, I would, I would echo John's comments that I think that, I would share your concerns that if we go down the road right, then there's the West Bank and there's South Africa, and right, there's a litany of places of atrocities. But, but I, I think that the, the board and this sort of action, when it bubbles up sort of organically in a, in a moment in history, I suspect we'll find the right level, and we'll find these things on occasion and when they're especially prescient. And, and I'm, I'm supportive of Mr. Dito's action, and I think we'll, we'll find the right tone.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Edo?
Aye.
Edo, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Garner?
No.
Garner, no. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
No.
Wedenhopp?
No.
Wedenhopp, no. Motion three.
Request for future agenda items? Would wish to offer items for topics of future agenda? Seeing none, announcements?
I'd just like to announce to the viewing audience that the use of these electronic devices while going through our 289-page agenda this evening is probably saving taxpayer money.
Agreed. Yes, 200, well, basically 300 times seven.
Yes, times seven, too.
Several reams of paper.
Right.
Several trees have been saved.
Ms. Herzog?
I just wanted to commend those who prepared board reports for this evening as I went through all 289 pages, and I did. It struck me that there were several people who did quite a bit of heavy lifting in preparing for the 24 resolutions for tonight, including Doctors Geigley and Gunlock, along with Julie Mosher and Kim Brown. And I just, I'm not sure, I forgot anybody. I apologize for that. But anyone who prepared a board report for this evening, I commend you for the quality of the reports. I know I've questioned that at previous meetings, and I just want to say that I, I was very pleased with the quality of the materials, which I believe are in line with, I can never remember the, the specific strategic goal, but it has to do with providing board members with adequate and comprehensive information on which to make data-driven decisions. So I thank everyone who prepared quality board reports for this evening.
Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, I take a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property is the investigating of public funds, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a new session under 19.851E. A, Ashkash Education Association Negotiation Strategies. B, Ashkash Paraprofessional Employee Association, OPEA Negotiation Strategies. C, Non Teaching Employee Association, NTEA Negotiation Strategies.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Wedenhopp?
Aye.
Wedenhopp, aye. Edo?
We are in executive session. We've been...